Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Tonight is Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. I'm going to say Wednesday, we usually meet on Thursday, but today's Wednesday. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WCTV. And an audio recording is being made by Jamie Wickston. Thank you to WCTV for all that they did, not only to get us live on TV again tonight, but to move us to this different location. I know it takes a lot more work, a lot more people to make this happen, so thank you for doing that. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And let me just say how exciting it is, not only to have so many people here, but to have so many students here. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Would anyone like to address the school committee? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to good news. Is there anyone who'd like to share some good news? April, Kevin, Jeff?
Awesome, thanks.
All I would like to say is thank you to everyone who worked so hard this week to clean the schools up so that school was able to open up again on Tuesday. That was quite a storm, we're not used to moving that much snow around, or at least at our house, we weren't used to moving that much snow around. So thank you to everyone who worked so hard to make that happen for Tuesday morning. And next, we'll move on to the report of the student rep, Adrian. Hi Adrian.
Thank you, hello. It's that time of year where we don't really have a lot of news to report, because not much has been going on with sports and clubs. Winter sports are closing, or they are ending in a few weeks, so there's that. The prom dress closet, Key Club and Student Council are organizing. They have begun collecting dresses that will be given out to students attending prom this year who need a dress. And then the tree order form, for the tree organization that I spoke about at last meeting, the form, the order form has opened. So anyone who wants to purchase a sapling can, they are $5 each, and the form will close in one month.
Okay, thank you. And next on the agenda is a presentation from Wareham Elementary School.
Good evening, Wareham School Committee. We are very excited to present what we love about Wareham Elementary. With me today, I have, introduce yourself.
Helena.
Noah.
Sebastian.
And they're going, they're representing grades two, three, and four. And without further ado, I'm going to begin our slideshow.
Welcome, everyone.
What I love about Wareham Elementary School is the new walkers and the benches next to them. Oh, you skipped.
What I love about Wareham Elementary School is we are one big family and support each other.
What I love about Wareham Elementary is I will be the first trumpet player on stage at Wareham Elementary.
What I like about Wareham Elementary School is the, about the cafeteria is the paintings, the happy paintings, and you can get a burrito or a sandwich at the deli.
I really like the acoustics of the music room. I am playing the trumpet in the upcoming Wareham Elementary Winter Concert, which will be held on February 16th at 6:00.
In PE, I can be energetic and play games with my friends.
What I like about Wareham Elementary School, about the playground, is the climbing piece, piece and the green bridge is my favorite.
In art, I have been learning how to create abstract art.
What I like about Wareham Elementary School is to go into breakout spaces and hang out and read.
In STEAM, we learn really cool things and work with friends to build projects.
I've been learning about, I've been learning division and multiplication.
I've been learning about friction and how to regroup when subtracting.
I have been learning about creative writing and volcanoes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, school committee. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
I just want to say again, thank you, students, for being here tonight. It's really exciting to have you, and thank you to your families for coming out tonight to bring you here tonight. Does anyone have any questions? April?
How did you guys like going away for Christmas break and coming back to a brand-new school?
It was, it was cool.
It was cool? Was it, was it a little bit tricky to learn where your new class was? Yeah, but did you find, did you find it quick?
Yeah, I was like, I'm gonna get lost right away.
Well, I'm glad you're enjoying it, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
And I just want to say Helena, Noah, and Sebastian, you're great public speakers. You were very clear, you spoke up very, with a great amount of volume and clarity, and thank you very much for that presentation. I'm glad that you really like your school, you can see that.
You're welcome.
So my question for all three of you is, is it easier to learn in a beautiful new building?
Yeah. Yes.
Why is that?
Because...
It's definitely easier to learn, because we definitely have newer things, and, and it's fun doing, all of like the special teachers have their own classroom and gymnasium. It's, it's nice that they don't have to go from room to room. It's nice that they have their own room.
Well, you did a great job, and thank you for being here.
Welcome. Thank you, welcome.
I just want to say, one of my favorite things about the building are the happy paintings on the wall, too, in the cafeteria and in the gym. And I'm really looking forward to the concert, February 16th. All right, thanks, you guys.
And I just want to say special thanks also to the assistant principals, and especially Ms. Russo, who put this presentation together for us, too, along with the students here. So, thank you all, beautiful job.
All right, we're gonna move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to take next up the report of the school committee. So Jim, if you want to come up to the table now, we're gonna do that next.
Well, Jim's getting settled at the table. I just would like to announce to the public that we are looking for input still regarding a superintendent survey. So we're looking to get those in by February 28th. So if you can go to the school website, you can link to that survey. You can also go to Wareham Week and link to that survey, and give us your input of what qualities you think we should be looking for in the next leader of our school district. Also, we're still looking for a few volunteers, some parent volunteers to serve on the committee, a regular education parent and a special education parent. So again, if you go to the website or to Wareham Week, we would gladly take volunteers. And then we will choose out of the volunteers who ultimately is on the committee on March 3rd. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Jim Hardy from MASK, who is helping to lead our search for the next superintendent. And it'll be our chance as a committee, a full committee, to ask questions of Jim, and he can give us an overview. So thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, and it's so, so much fun to follow student presentations. They set the bar way up here, so, great job, kids. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the superintendent search. I distributed earlier two pieces of information. The first is the announcement brochure, the invitation for applications, that was distributed earlier. We got some feedback from members with some additions, corrections, and so forth. Put it into the format that you see there, and as you can see, it's just, it's basic information, the school district's website address, some statistical information about the school district as far as enrollment, budget, the buildings, what the administration, staff structure looks like. And then there's a list of, you know, criteria and qualifications that candidate applications will be measured against. Then on the backside, again, the timeline for the search. We're looking to have a deadline for submitting applications on March 11th, which will then kick off the rest of the process, where you were indicating a screening committee, looking still for volunteers to participate in that. Just so people have a clear understanding of what the expectation is for members of the search of that screening committee. It's approximately seven meetings that, that will be entailed, maybe eight. The first meeting's an orientation. There's an obligation for any body appointed by a public body to be instructed on the requirements of the open meeting law, conflict of interest law, and ethics law. So that's what happens in that first orientation meeting. Then the second meeting would be where we review all the applications that are received to identify which candidates or how many candidates the search committee wants to bring in for those preliminary interviews. Once those interviews are current, it's typically four, maybe five blocks of time. It could be weeknights or Saturday morning type of situation. And then one meeting at the end to decide who to forward to the school committee for consideration. My suggestion, based on best practice, is that the search committee is instructed to bring forward no less than three, no more than five candidates. By Attorney General interpretation, the search committee cannot forward one name, because they've basically supplanted your authority to select a superintendent. So at a minimum, they have to bring two. The dilemma is, if one person happens to withdraw, you're back down to one again. So by having three names come forward, it gives, it always gives you an opportunity to compare and select the best candidate or the best fit here for Wareham. And anything more than five becomes cumbersome for you in a public, in a public meeting environment. So that's the typical charge we ask that the search committee be placed under to bring forward no less than three, no more than five candidates. So the search committee, the interviews would be the week of March 21st, with a conclusion on around March 31st. And then the second week in April would be the interviews with the, the public interviews with the school committee, site visits and so forth, with a, with a decision schedule for April 28th or earlier, if you so choose to do so, but no later than April 28th. And then start date of July 1, 2022. And then there's a little brief profile about the community of Wareham here. And then, as you can see in the back of the brochure, we have some space to add some photos. And briefly speaking to Kevin before the meeting, I thought maybe a photo of the, if you have a photo of the three schools, that might fit in that block as well. I know on the front, we have the Viking logo on the top of the page and the "Welcome to Wareham Lighthouse", which I guess historically has been referred to as the gateway to the Cape. And on the back, we have the Town of Wareham seal. So that would be, if I could get the pictures sent to me via email, we can put them into the brochure and then get it going, and make the announcement and put it up and send it out electronically.
I'm sure we can do that.
Okay. The other document I share with you is just where we are as far as the survey is right now. Obviously, until the survey is completely concluded, we still have more, potentially more input to bring in here. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what the participation is, is so far. We currently have 107 responses, and that breaks down, about 30% are parents of students, who, parents of Wareham Public School students. 40% are employees of the Wareham Public Schools. 22% are residents that do not have children enrolled in the Wareham Schools. And then we got about 5% of students. So maybe we can implore our student representative to maybe pass the word to her fellow students to jump onto the website and participate, because we'd like to get as much feedback and input into this process as possible. The higher the numbers, the more reliable the data is. And we always have others that don't, that for some reason don't feel they fit into any one of those categories. One of them is, they put down that they were a parent and an employee. And the other was, because we had asked for a recent graduate, meaning class of 18, 19, 20, or 21. And somebody put down they were a class of 2017, so it didn't fit into the recent graduate, so. But that's, you know, it's still two more people that we got in. And I don't want to talk too much about the details of what's in here, only because I don't want to influence future people participating in the survey. But there are some trends that are starting to develop, and you can look through those and see where they are. One of the things that, in the open response questions come up, is that like, in question two, we ask people to select the five most significant current or future issues that the new superintendent will need to address. And people say, well, I can't narrow it down to five, they're all important. And the idea is, we're trying to identify what the priorities are. That's why we're making you, we're forcing you to pick only five. So what's the most important five to you? And also included is the open-ended responses that are in question three. That's in your packet, that's in your little packet as well. Some of those are pretty telling, and it kind of reiterates what some of the selections are in the previous question, as well as question four, which again asks people to prioritize, prioritize what are the top five skills and abilities of job applicants that are most important to the Wareham Public Schools? And, you know, those, there are three that really kind of jumped out, out of that list so far. But then there's a bunch of like 15 that are all within a few percentage points of each other. And I also included all the, any additional comments, which was question five. You have all those responses there as well. Like I said, I don't want to get in too much detail of that, because I don't want to influence anybody who's still going to take the survey and has not yet done so. But I'd rather they approach that with an open, kind of an open mind as they look at it. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have going forward.
Anyone have any questions? Jeff?
Jim, there's a lot of, on the categorization of, for example, the top five skill sets, there's, the top one, for example, says development and dot-dot-dot. Where can we see what's after the dot-dot-dot? What question is that? The very first one. For the, the top five skills. Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, when I, if you look at the next page, where it gives you the actual numbers. Thank you. You'll see the full. Got it, okay. Because the, that first graph was trying to, the more important part was the graph bar. The second one's got the, the actual numbers. No problem. And that's for question four as well. So, I know it's your job to protect us from our own mistakes, but if, you've done a few of these, I suspect. What, what do you think, you don't have to count them, that would just, you know, we might extrapolate. I did count them, actually. Oh, really? Okay. Seventy, seventy-seven. How many? Seventy-seven. That's called experience. So if you could think of, fortunately, it's been quite a while since we've had to do one in Wareham. What, what do you think are some common mistakes we should avoid? I think going into the, going into the process, having an open mind of the feedback that you're getting from an instrument like this. Now, granted, it's not a scientific survey, but it's got some good information in here. And if you read it and you take it with an open mind, and you kind of say, all right, this is what our constituent groups, you're talking about parents, staff members, community members, students. Those are the, the top four stakeholder groups. And you're seeing, and the final one I give you will break down the priorities from each group. Like, these are the top three or four things from parents, these are the top three or four things from... So you'd be able to see where that overlap is, and try to identify and look at that and say, all right, what are the common themes here? What is it that every group feels is the most important? And take that into your own processing of candidate applications. And in the selection of the search committee, it's a huge time commitment. You're asking these people to commit anywhere between 40 and 48 hours of work. Not all at once, but there's, there's work they're gonna be doing at home, reviewing applications, being prepared to come to the meeting, participating in the interviews, processing what they learned during the interviews, and coming up with recommendations to bring to you as far as who, these are the best three or four, whatever the number happens to be. For the sake of argument, I'm gonna just say three. These are the best three candidates that meet what we were looking for, that match up with what the community and the school community has identified as the needs, the skill set necessary to walk in the door and be successful here in Wareham. Now, you can look at this priority list and probably apply it to almost every other school district in the Commonwealth. The difference is, is what's number one and what's number two? What are the top two things? Because those are might, those are definitely gonna be different district to district. They're gonna, people, each different, each district needs something different. Some might not have, some school districts might be so small, they don't have a business manager. So the superintendent's also the business manager, so they need a superintendent that's very strong in finance and budgeting. Or they may not have a curriculum director, so they need someone who's worked in curriculum. Or maybe the biggest need is special education, so they'd like someone who's got a special education background. Those are the things that we need, that we need to identify. And what skills, what skills specifically do you need here in Wareham so that the next person could come in and be in a position to succeed? It's great that you haven't had to do this in a while. There are places that, it's a every-three-year cycle. There are some places I've done four searches in, in 25 years. There are some I've done one, and the person's still there. And it's really just a matter of matching up the right person to what you need now, and looking forward into the future. What challenges are you gonna be faced with? Like, to give away one of the things, one of the top things is keeping Wareham kids in Wareham schools. That's come through not only in open, in the selection process as far as a question, but also in some of the open-ended responses. So that seems to be a key challenge, is keeping Wareham students in Wareham. So what will that take? If you keep that in mind, you look, you look at candidate applications, and some of the things I will tell the search committee as well, keep in mind what the needs are of the district. Forget the personalities for a little bit, look just at the paper, look at the qualifications, and listen to the person speaking. Some people interview really well, and they blow your socks off. But when you look into it, maybe they didn't say as much. And other people maybe are a little bit drier in their interviews, but there was a lot of content. Being able to, to evaluate candidates based on what is presented, rather than the external part of it. That's, people get trapped into the flash, and there's very little substance. Jim, the site visits that we, that we take. Yep. What's your recommendation as to who goes on these site visits? Because it's obviously not the entire school committee or the search committee. No, it's really, at that point, the process gets turned over to the school committee. And it's our recommendation that school committee members go, as many of you, as many of you who can go, go. You have an opportunity to meet the candidate in a little bit less formal setting. But only the school committee members? We don't pull selected people from the search committee? You can invite anybody you would like to go. Understood. But it's real important for the school committee members to go if they can. If their job allows them to, because all these take time during the day. So we're, understanding that, but if you are available, it's a great experience, I think. It's more, I think it's more important for you visiting the other, the candidate's district than it is for the candidate to visit the district here. But it's important for that candidate, too, because it's a dual evaluation. You're evaluating a candidate, they're evaluating you. Is this a place I want to uproot and moved, and relocate to? And move my, you know, change my professional position and come to? So it's, keeping that in mind, too. Finally, the, you mentioned the fact that sometimes you can pick someone, and then they end up withdrawing. How common is that? It's not very common, mainly because, once they're named a finalist, their name's public. So if they were gonna withdraw, they would withdraw before that. Once your name's out there, it's out there forever. So the only challenge would be, if your, if your finalist candidate, candidates are also finalists in other districts, and they may get a job somewhere else. Okay, thanks, Jim. Yep.
April?
Do we know how many other districts are currently going through this so we know how competitive the field is going to be during our sort, our search?
I was hoping nobody was gonna ask that. There's quite a few. Sandwich, Wareham Sandwich. Plainville Superintendent is just announced his intention to retire. Middleboro Superintendent has just, has announced his intention to retire. Franklin Superintendent just took a job in Barnstable, so they're gonna be looking for a search, for, for a position. And that's just south, like southeast of MASK, not including the whole state. There's a bunch more out west, and there's probably 15 or 20 going on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, are you all set? Okay. The, the survey, so just so people know how important it is that they do, you know, and that they're, I know everyone's time is very valuable. Just tell us what the survey will be used for.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The survey.
Yeah.
What will it be used for? I know, like, formulating questions.
The survey will be, will be a template for the search committee. This is what we're looking for. So when you get a stack of applications, if anybody has ever been in a position where you had to hire somebody, you get in that pile of applications, what are you looking for in that pile of applications? What specifically is important to you? Is it the type of experience? Is it their education? Is it what degree they own? Things to that nature, what's important? So if you, if you don't know what you're looking for, then any candidate will do the job for you. It's just trying to get the, the search committee to focus on specific skill sets and look for that in the application material and in the responses to the questions during the, that preliminary interview. In fact, it's almost a given that a number of the questions during the interview will be focused on, the key points that come out of the, the survey, to make sure the search committee gets that information.
Okay.
If it's not in the application, then we need to draw it out in an interview question.
I just wanted to reinforce the fact that the surveys are important, they will be used.
Very important.
Yeah, okay. And the timeline, I know you talked about, not the timeline, the, the time involved for the people on the search committee. Is that published somewhere, Kevin, do you, so if...
I did put, I thought it could be up to four hours in the evening for that week of actual interviews.
Okay, all right.
I remember reading, I remember something Kevin had forwarded to me that had that.
Okay.
Had that in it.
Well, because like you said, it's really important that people understand.
Well, you know, when you're looking at a committee of 11 or 13, what was it, 13?
13.
13. It's important to commit to those dates, like... It's important to commit to those dates, like, whatever that, that week is, for the interviews.
Right.
That's basically, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and probably the following Monday, if not, I always kind of keep Saturday morning, because it's New England and it's March. So if we get snow, we need to reschedule stuff, we need to have a date set aside for that. And I try to not schedule stuff on Saturdays for people, but I need it as a backup date, just in case.
Okay.
So that's what that would be used for. So if we get to that first planning meeting, and we start talking about, you know, the schedule, and half the room says, well, you know, we can't meet on that day, or whatever, it's like, well, now we have to start to find a date that thirteen people don't have a conflict with.
Right.
And it's, it becomes really difficult. So by setting the dates right up front, this is when it's going to happen, if you are volunteering for this committee, note that that's when this is going to happen.
Right, no, I, I think that's really important. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Want to add one other question? Oh, the job, so the job description, the job, the invitation to apply.
Yep.
Where will that be posted, other than on your website?
It gets sent in an email blast to all the superintendents and assistant superintendents in the Commonwealth, as well as the superintendent distribution list in the six New England states. And then it gets posted on workalike groups across the country. Massachusetts, the Mass Association of School Committees is a member of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches, which is a, a workalike group of state associations across the country. So, we post their vacancies on our website, they post our vacancies on their website. If you look at our website, you'll see searches from other states down at the bottom. So, if somebody was looking to relocate to Tennessee, you could look at our website, and you could see whatever openings are currently being posted in Tennessee. And same happens across the country.
Okay.
We've gotten away from print advertising because of the cost associated with it, but also in getting feedback from candidates, they aren't looking in print publications for vacancies now, they're all looking online.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just to give you an idea, a typical ad in the Sunday Globe would be about five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's crazy. And really, I mean, that's true not just for superintendents, but for many, many.
Yeah, I know that some districts use SchoolSpring. We've found that we can, we reach the same people, so it's a duplication.
Okay.
And the dilemma with SchoolSpring is that if it, if it's your account, the applications go to you, not us.
Right.
So, and it kind of, we worry about the confidentiality part of it, if they're, if they're not coming to us first.
Well, I imagine that those who are in the market for a job as a superintendent know where to look.
Yes.
For those postings. Did you have something else, Jim?
No, no, thank you.
All right, if no one has anything else, thank you. So when, when is the next time that we will have an update like this?
I just had the calendar in front of me.
So, so we're setting the committee on March third.
Right, okay.
And then, let's see.
Yeah, March third.
Okay.
Have we had many interested applicants for the committee, or are there still certain areas that we need to put out that we're still looking for?
So, we, we don't have any parents yet that have reached out to me, reached out to me. We have had a couple of community members at large, some town officials, teachers are working through the WEA, they're going to get the teachers, student council is working on the student, but right now, it's the parent, we could use a couple more parent volunteers, special ed and regular ed.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Jeff, if it helps, the, the search committee orientation meeting is March tenth.
Okay.
And then, our meeting to review applications would be March sixteenth. Those are, those are dates that are set.
Okay.
And then the interviews would begin the week of March twenty-one, and conclude by March thirty-one. But the week of March twenty-one, the expectation would be Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, Saturday morning, and the following Monday, the twenty-eighth.
Okay. And you spoke about the school committee being available to visit, to do site visits.
Would be the week of April eleventh.
So that's that week.
Right, and those would be during the day, because that's when kids are present.
Okay.
No one wants to go visit schools that don't have children in them.
And would you recommend that if you went on one site visit, you should go on all site visits?
If you can.
But if not?
And as many of you.
As many as you, okay.
That can go, I mean, if, if, if more than a quorum of you are available, then you simply post it that the school committee's conducting a site visit.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
You've met your open meeting law obligation, and then just don't deliberate about anything you see until you get back to a meeting.
Got it.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Are we all set? Kevin, do you have anything else?
No, I think, I think we're all set.
Okay, all right, thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
So as soon as I get those pictures, we can get the ball rolling and get this distributed.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, so we will go back to the agenda, so the next item is obsolete furniture.
Thank you. So in your packet, we have a list of obsolete furniture. It is with technology, and there's no object on this list that is worth more than five hundred dollars. This list will be recycled through an electronics recycling company. Right now, we're currently working with a company who recycles Chromebooks and laptops that can no longer be used by schools and businesses that are still in good shape. What happens with this is they recycle, they clean them and refurbish them with new license, and then they go back and offer them for sales in the communities such as Wareham. We, our first pickup would be next Monday. They will refurb, refurbish them if they're able to do that with the Chromebook, and then they will offer them for sale in Wareham to the public, and we estimate that the refurbished Chromebook would be offered for sale between sixty and eighty dollars, and we will keep you informed of the progress of the refurbished Chromebooks. So at this time, I would ask the committee to please vote to, vote the following items to be obsolete.
April?
I know I had asked at a previous meeting, but when we do put items up for obsolete, I know that we do, or you've said that we attempt to get a monetary value for those items before they are then discarded, and I believe you are going to try to get what we've been able to get back for some of those items. Is that something that you have, can have available at our next meeting?
If we had anything that was a monetary value, we would do that, but this is also obsolete, it's not worth selling.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Talk to me, how long does it take for a Chromebook to become obsolete?
Oh, five years, and that's pushing it, less than five years, actually. License, the way they, they've structured them now is license start, expiring, and many times you can't renew them because they're outdated.
I would just say that the reason that the superintendent mentioned the five hundred dollar amount is that is the amount that's listed in the town bylaws, so we have consulted with the town administrator and the chair of the Board of Selectmen about the value and the process for disposing of obsolete items. So, that's the, that's the amount. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Thank you.
And next is the report of the superintendent.
I would ask that the committee please vote approval for bill and payroll warrants as listed in the newsletter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Thank you. There are no gifts on this meeting, and I would just let you know that all items have been cleared out of DECA's, and I've made notice to the town administrator today that we are in the process of turning DECA's back over officially. We're taking all the utilities out of our names, and it will be turned back to the town.
I thought we were going to leave some equipment as requested.
We have.
Okay.
We've pulled out anything that's of value to us, and then we've left furniture, we've left anything that is something that cannot be used in the schools.
Got it, okay.
So it's not here on the agenda, but could you just talk a little bit about the, the COVID, so I noticed that the COVID numbers came down drastically this week opposed to last week in the schools. And the testing changed today, this week?
Yes, the testing's changing this week, and what will happen will be, parents and staff, families have had an opportunity to sign their child up to receive a test. The test will be shipped to us on Thursdays. So one week, teachers will rece, and faculty and staff will receive the COVID test, the next week, it will be distributed to families. It's an every-other-week basis, there are two tests in the box. You can sign up on a rolling basis, so if you would like to sign up and you haven't, you still can do that. The problem, or the caution that I would give you would be, if you decide that you would like to sign up on Monday, it's very likely that you will not have a test there on Thursday. It takes a turnaround time, and they only look at it one time a week. So whenever they look at it for Wareham, that's when they register everybody who's signed up, and you might be waiting a week and a half to two weeks. Right now, the last count I heard, we had approximately three hundred families sign up, and this is up from about a hundred and seventy last week, so we're starting to see an increase. This week, there's a pickup for families, and it's, it will be distributed at your child's school. I know that the principals have been working with families, letting them know how to pick it, how to pick up the test, and if it, if they do not opt out, it will be sent home in backpacks, the child's backpack, or with the child, if families would like to come and pick it up themselves, then they need to make arrangements with the school.
Okay, Jeff?
I have a question for Adrian, and since we're privileged to have administration here from, from the elementary school, I'd like to ask them as well. My question is, is COVID, ho-hum, no big deal, still a big deal, or something in between?
For the students in the schools?
Yeah.
I've heard, I haven't heard so much lately, since we've been back from break, that a lot of students have been out, but right before break, I know a lot of students were out either because they had COVID, or were waiting for a test result to come back, but over the last two weeks, I think, like she mentioned, it has died down a little bit, so I don't think as many students have been sent home. The mask requirements have been getting like heavier, like they've been pushing masks more on the students, and like, making sure that we have them on properly. So, I think with that, and students being tested more, they had, the concerns have died down a little bit.
And, any impact on, on the actual educational environment in terms of the ability to, to learn?
I think so, just for the students who are sent home, who are waiting for a test or have COVID, because they have to be out for like seven to ten school days about, depending on like when they leave.
It's, it's not five? It's five?
Five school days, sorry.
But five school days can feel like two weeks.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're out for almost a whole week. And then they have to keep in contact with their teachers through email, so that can be a little difficult, because they're not in class getting one-on-one engagement with their teachers.
Thank you. Any, yeah, I'd love to hear from Mrs. Tam, if she has some thoughts.
From a principal's perspective, I think that the COVID routine has been, it's routine, we're very routine, I mean, I think that the students are so used to it at this point, wearing masks, it's second nature. We still, you know, do pass out net masks for those who don't have it, but I feel like we're, we're in a regulated state. We're working back with small groups again, children are working in different classrooms, we have some more flexibility I, I feel that we didn't have at the beginning stages of COVID, when we were hybrid and, you know, and it was six feet apart.
You're not doing, you're not doing social distancing, correct?
With masks, we're, we're, you know, we're distancing when we're eating, that is the key, we're trying to keep three feet apart when we're eating.
Three feet?
Yep, and if, and there are different protocols in place for students who have just returned, there's protocols in place, based on CDC, that those students need to be in their own kind of quarantine for a bit.
Really?
But, it hasn't really affected the majority of our school day, or our practices, which is encouraging.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. And then we're to any other business? Does anyone have any other business they wanted to bring up? All right. Our next meeting is two weeks from tomorrow night, so that's February seventeenth, and we're back, Jamie, we're back in room three twenty for that meeting. All right.
Would you like a motion to return?
I would like a motion to return.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you.